Good evening, I'd like to call a meeting to order and I'll ask Madam Clerk for a roll call please.
Ms. Hodges, absent. Mr. Mills, absent. Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Roseburgen?
Here.
Mr. Kleindeans?
Here. For the record, Ms. Hodges was here for closed sessions and was unable to stay, and Mr. Mills is home with a bit of a bout. He's dealing with kidney stones. So we are going to wish them both well and excuse them both on their absences tonight. If you'll all please rise for the flag salute.
(inaudible)
Good evening, I'd like to call a meeting to order and I'll ask Madam Clerk for a roll call please.
Ms. Hodges, absent. Mr. Mills, absent. Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Roseburgen?
Here.
Mr. Kleindeans?
Here. For the record, Ms. Hodges was here for closed sessions and was unable to stay, and Mr. Mills is home with a bit of a bout. He's dealing with kidney stones. So we are going to wish them both well and excuse them both on their absences tonight. If you'll all please rise for the flag salute.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight our invocation is Dr. Chuck Mitchell, Seventh Day Adventist. Good evening sir, thank you for coming down tonight.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we've gathered here tonight to discuss, yes to debate, deal with the needs of our community. These council members and the folk that are here, they could be home watching TV, relaxing with their families, but they're giving their time and their talents to work together for the good of us all. We believe in the ancient adage that in a multitude of councilors there's wisdom, so we ask tonight, we ask your blessing and we pray your blessing upon them, that they might collectively apply their wisdom to the issues at hand. And we do this in recognition of your presence and in gratitude for the privilege we have each of living in such a country, such a county, indeed such a city. Amen.
Thank you. Tonight we have a presentation scheduled by our police department. I'm going to ask the chief to come forward. Apparently we're going to acknowledge Dennis Graham and Jane Brewer tonight. Do you know that?
If I could have Jane Brewer and Sergeant Graham come forward. Good evening Mayor, City Council. I want to do a brief presentation for some outstanding work that was done by Sergeant Dennis Graham and Jane Brewer with the school district. Their hard work resulted in the school district obtaining a grant over $300,000. It's a pass-through grant that'll go from the school to the police department for a prevention program for a family intervention officer. It's a new concept that the state liked the idea. They funded it where the officer will work with parenting, with parents and parenting groups to help dysfunctional families to get better. The theory is if we can get functional, a dysfunctional family better, it will help the crime rate and it will also help keep kids off of drugs, give them better skills, life skills, and it was an idea to go after and make a family healthy. Their hard work is a result of that grant, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them. I have some very nice accommodations that's going to commend them, very nice, they're just not done. I'll describe them to you, they're gonna be about like this. Very, very, very nice, and what I'll do is I'll present them to them at a later time when they are printed up, but I wanted to publicly bring them before you and let you, you also seen on the agenda, we'll be bringing it forward at a later time to get the position allocated. But it was their, their work, they did this three days solid, and it was one of the, one of the best grants I've ever read, and it was, it was very well put together. So if I could just publicly thank them on behalf of the police department and on the city. (applause) Do we have, shake their hand?
(inaudible)
I know that Jane Brewer wants to talk. She said that she was on the tennis courts, came in here particularly just to talk to you.
Perfect.
(laughing) I'll always talk.
Oh yeah Jane, go.
Yeah, yeah. I think that you'll find that the grant that we wrote is, I'm very impressed with having, working with the chief and Dennis because it's a nice meld of law enforcement and mental health, which isn't something that you see in most places. You know, that, that attitude of taking a mental health approach to helping families that are crying out for help, you know, by their behavior. So I'm very excited about that. That's the piece that's my heart. Okay Dennis.
I just want to say that this continues our practice of involving the community in the police department, and it makes us a stronger community, makes the better police department, and Jane did most of the work on this grant.
(laughing) Shake their hands.
Excellent work. Let's turn now to our city clerk for a report on the posting of the tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday, the 13th. A supplemental was also posted at that time concerning a memorandum of understanding with the MAPS employees. There are additional materials before the council tonight concerning items 24, 31, 32, 33, and 34. I do understand that there have been some items that are being withdrawn from the agenda, and I'll ask the city manager to say those items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor, I would request that we pull from the agenda number, we will go with number nine, number 18, number 21, number 24, and I would like to reserve the right to withdraw number 27.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ready. We got nine, 18, 21, 24, and I reserve the right to pull 27 if in fact that is required at that point in the meeting. Very good. Let's turn now to our city attorney for a closed session report.
Yes, council meetings met in closed session. On the agenda, real property negotiations involving Plaza Theater, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Items listed involving real property negotiations with John Westman was not discussed. Item listed concerning Tom Hantages, concerning in Cali and Celia and Arenas Road, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Item involving Jerry Johnson was not discussed. The item involving real property negotiations with Desert Water Agency was not discussed. The item involving the Visitor Center property Nichols Family Trust, we gave a status report on that, no action was taken. Under exposure litigation in one case, we gave a status report, no action was taken. We did not discuss initiation of litigation. On the items listed for labor negotiations, we gave a status report, and the item involving MAPS is on the agenda tonight, no action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Alshar. The Housing Authority and the Industrial Development Authority have no business scheduled tonight, but we do have business as the financing authority, and with that we'll adjourn for the purposes of convening as the financing authority. And with that, anyone wishing to address the finance authority, please do so at this time under public comments. You have public comments for the city council, we will call those later on in tonight's agenda. Seeing no public comments for the financing authority, we'll close public comments. Turn to our only legislative item, which is item FAA, the Visitors Information Center, and I'll turn to Mr. Ready for his staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What's before you this evening is our recommendation that you approve this. This gives you an option if in fact that you care to have the convention center bonds reimburse the general fund for the improvements that we make to the visitor center. As you know, this would reimburse the general fund for approximately $700,000. Mr. Canar can give you the specifics with regard to this option, and I would like ask him to do that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The action before you is a resolution to declare the city's intent to reimburse expenditures for the Visitor Information Center remodel from the proceeds of the convention center expansion tax-exempt bond issue. What this does is give council the option, once we get to the point of issuing the convention center bonds, to use some of those proceeds, and we would increase the proceeds by that like amount when we set the bond issue size, and whatever expenses we have for the remodel of the Visitor Information Center could then be in effect financed through there. It's an efficient way of financing the improvements at the Visitor Information Center, but if council chose at the time when we're issuing the convention center bonds not to do that and pay cash for it, you certainly could do that. This simply preserves your option to finance the improvements in that way. And I think there was a question about the resolution on, in section four, where it talks about, in the last sentence, the maximum principal amount of the bonds expected to be issued from the project is $30 million. Just to clarify that we're talking about the convention center in that place, right after project, I would request the council if we could add in phase two expansion of the convention center, to make it clear that we're talking about the convention center bond issue, and this is simply piggybacking the visitor information cost on top of that. And that concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Canar. Members of the, of the agency, any questions on this resolution? It's the body's pleasure.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second it.
Motion for approval by Ms. Roseburgen, and second by Mr. Oden. Any additional comments? Ask for a roll call please.
This would be as a revised resolution. Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Roseburgen?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. It's deemed three oh and unanimous. We'll now adjourn as the financing authority and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. First item before the agency is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Community Redevelopment Agency, and I see these comment cards are based on city council issues, anyone wishing to address the CRA, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll turn to our first legislative item, which is item A, the REDAC Village of Palm Springs Development Center. Mr. Ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We recommend that you approve this contract. This is the agreement with Jerry Ogburn, who runs our downtown development agency. This is the 13th year for Mr. Ogburn, and by all accounts, the stakeholders, certainly the council, and certainly from my vantage point, we seem to be very pleased with Mr. Ogburn. There is not a cost increase over last year's contract, and we would request that you renew this contract at the same amount for an additional year. If you have any questions, Mr. Raymond and Mr. Ogburn are in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ready, members of the agency, questions or comments? Otherwise, what's your pleasure?
Move the resolution.
I'll second it.
Motion for approval by Ms. Roseburgen, and again, seconded by Mr. Oden. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Roseburgen?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. It's three oh, it's unanimous. We'll adjourn as the CRA, and now reconvene as city council. First order of business before the city council is public comments. I have a number of cards here. Anyone wishing to speak, if you fell out a card and give it to the city clerk, it'll help move things along. First speaker is Shirley Bush, followed by Richard Pontus, and Robert Hoffman, and then Peter Wagstaff, followed by Mr. Robert Hill. If I can ask you all to come down and form a line, it helps to move it along that much faster. Shirley, I believe you've got the first, first comment. Three minutes, the clock counts down from that. It's in front of Jeannie and in front of me, and thank you for coming down and welcome.
My name's Shirley Bush. I'm a Realtor with Mary Ellen Hill &amp; Associates, and I've been working with the owners in Quail Point to remove the resale restriction. I also own a condo at Sunrise Palms. We have the same resale restriction. February 3rd, I met with Mr. Raymond, Economic Development Department. He told me to hold on to the owner's request and said, city attorney said we would indeed need the 75% written consent from the lenders.
Shirley, pull the microphone down a little, you're breaking down. Yeah, there.
Don't subtract my minutes. I followed Mr. Raymond's direction and obtained 88% of the lender's written consent. April 25th, I faxed a memo to Mr. Raymond telling him I had the written consent and when could we meet to discuss these developments and hand over these written requests. A month ago, I gave my public comments just as I am today. When I said I had signatures in hand, the city clerk asked for me to give them to her, and I did. Thank God they were copies. I still have the originals. I still have not, a month later, have not received any confirmation, written or otherwise, from the city. Mr. Mills, last week's study session, he said, "Let's not do this again." Again, I am requesting a meeting with Mr. Alshar, and I would like to have his signature and/or a written signature from Mr. Ready. I will then mail this acknowledgement to the owners to keep with their records, which is important for their records. Especially since last week's study session, we now have many more questions. Mr. Mills brought up a question last week's study session, effective zoning and general plan. There was not anyone from the planning department present to answer these questions. This new recommendation very definitely affects the markability of these homes. No one from the real estate community was invited to give their input as to how this recommendation could affect these properties and owners. I've been a Realtor with Mary Ellen Hill &amp; Associates for the past 19 years. I am very qualified to give input as to the effects of markability. I encourage other Realtors be present. I've had several owners who thought this restriction to be only 10 years. This is very important. I met with an original owner today. I now have this new document, which came from the city of Palm Springs. I also have the owner's prelim, original owner's prelim, and I found something that is very questionable. Mr. Alshar, last week, you said you wanted to communicate with the owners and solicit reactions, their reactions. When can we meet to view these new documents and hand over the owner's written request and lender's consents per Mr. Raymond's direction?
Thank you. Richard Pontus?
Yes, my name's Richard Pontius.
Pontius, sorry, thank you sir.
I've spoke before, I can validate everything Shirley has said. I was in the meetings with her, I've been active participant in this whole process. As I've mentioned before, I'll repeat it again, I worked for the city of Oakland for 10 years before I retired and moved down here. I find the actions of the city very disturbing, that we have not gotten a call. Every call's initiated by us. We've never got any feedback back. I was appalled that this study session had a proposal that was never run by us. What do you feel about it, property owners? What do you feel about it, Realtors? This isn't the way a government's supposed to operate. If I did this in the city of Oakland, I'd be in deep trouble, because we did not allow that. And I had a good reputation when I left there, because I called people back the same day. When there was something going on that affected communities' requests for service or some program, I called them, told them there was a special meeting coming up on this. We get nothing. We get nothing from the city of Palm Springs. And I'm just, one more time, requesting that we get some response. I think that's the only polite thing to do. And I'm also shocked by the proposal, because there's so many questions in that, as with the old procedure. The old procedure had so many questions. This one's got more. So there needs to be some involvement from people that are being affected. So thank you for your time.
Thank you sir. Sir Robert Hoffman, followed by Pete Wagstaff.
I've lived in Palm Springs, in fact, went to grammar school here, and I bring that to your attention, because I've been very patient now for probably 40 years, and I think basically, most of you should be congratulated, present the city stays beautiful, and whoever is responsible for landscape does a good job. That's certainly what I enjoy down here. However, there's, there's one issue and there's one location that just seems to be bypassed, and that's what I'm here to bring to your attention, and that's East Palm Canyon in Farrell, in front of the Desert Flower Apartment House. I see the mayor is nodding, that he knows the corner I'm talking about, and it's stayed ugly all these years, despite, all the way to India, it's beautiful. So I felt important enough to come down and share that with you, and hopefully that can be corrected. I thank you.
Thank you sir. Pete Wagstaff?
Yes. I'm a homeowner in Quail Point, and have the same thing with the resale restrictions on the properties. The owners in there have requested that it be eliminated. We've complied with what the city, as I understand it, what the city has asked us to do, and I think it's time to eliminate the restriction. And just wanted to come down and show my support for lifting that restriction. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Mr. Robert Hill, that's the last card I have. Anyone else wishing to speak, just come up and give your name to the city clerk.
Yes, I don't have too much more to add, it's just that I too, as well as most homeowners, are very disappointed. We were advised that we should have a majority of the homeowners and the lenders, and as Shirley said, we got an excess of 80%. And I think this, I feel, gives us the right, since we want this off and it's, it's majority of all the homeowners and the lenders, we should have it removed. And as I say, please look into it, because it's something we really want. It's really holding us back on resale values. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Hi, my name's Clint Holland, and I'm a property owner as well, at Quail Point, the Quail Point Development. And I wanted to discuss again the resale restriction and also the proposal that was suggested by the council members during your June 11th study session. First of all, on a couple of the other properties that have apparently the same issue. Last week, you mentioned in the June 11th meeting, I guess, that the city improperly conveyed six Sunrise Nordy homeowners, two six Sunrise Nordy homeowners, and now the city needs to get them back. If the city does this, does this mean that you have to buy them back? If so, the market value of these homes is plus or minus $100,000, and that's approximately $600,000. And in addition, I wanted to note that in your June 11th report, you mentioned grant deeds for Sunrise Nordy. This is leased land, you own the land. Leased land uses a lease assignment and consent, not a grant deed. In terms of Quail, the Quail Point owners, they have met the criteria required in the CCRs and asked that the sales restriction be eliminated. The council's presented, determined that this is a policy issue, not a legal issue, but a policy issue, and that the housing units have never been counted as affordable housing. In fact, I haven't, I haven't seen anywhere, any proof where, that they were ever marketed or sold as affordable housing. I, if there was a density bonus, I don't know who got that bonus, maybe the bonus really just went to the developer, because he sold more houses, more units, and to the city, because they get more taxes, more fees, and that sort of thing. I understand that some of the people that bought those first houses were investors. Anyway, the restriction no longer applies, and you suggested a proposal for June 11th does not eliminate this encumbrance on the owners, and in fact, would serve to penalize second, third, and fourth generation property owners in Palm Springs. The project is tainted now, as the brokers steer their clients away from looking at that development. They say you have problems with the city, because they have city approval, it takes another 30 days, you don't have that over here. It's sort of like, you know, the Indian lease and various leases and so on, only it's another layer. So we respectfully ask that the council honor our several requests for a meeting between the partners, or the parties on these issues, and before any formal proposal is floated out, as was suggested in the June 11th meeting, to the owners, by mail or whatever.
I'll ask you to come to close, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Basically, anything less than removing this restriction altogether will be looked as the city using its leverage. Take this proposal, it's better than what you got now, and that would be seen as strong-arming, honestly.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker please. Just give your name to the city clerk, you're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Latifa Klitzner, and I'm a resident of Ramon Mobile Home Park. And I was wondering, there's a group of us in our park, first of all, we have many elderly people, and you're aware of the new Ralph supermarket that's going up on Sunrise and Ramon. Well, when you come out of Ramon Mobile Home Park, you come out on Mini-HAHA, right on to Ramon, and they've built this median, and the landscaping, I'm sure, is going to be quite lovely. However, you can't make a left, and it's impossible almost to do that, although they've left space. So last evening, I drove up towards a canyon, came back, and I noticed that you really can't even see that median, and I was wondering if it could be looked at to see if some sort of lighting could be put there, because I think it would be dangerous after a while. So I'm just requesting that someone look into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments?
Good evening, Mayor, council, Jim Stewart, Palm Springs, record, address is on record. I just want to say a couple words regarding consent items four, five, and six, and for the benefit of the audience and the people on TV, the importance of these, of these agreements with the gang task force, the narcotics task force, the Department of Justice. As you know, I'm, I'm the senior member of the California State Parole Board. I handle 60% to 70% of all the drug addicts that come up for parole in the state of California. With the budgets, the way they are, we've been ordered to start releasing people. There are people being released without parole, with no parole conditions, and the police departments throughout the state are going to be taxed to the maximum. Any little bit that we can get from... get from the Bureau of Narcotic Enforcement, from gang task forces, and sharing throughout the valley, is going to be extremely important, because they're going to need the help. And the citizens, it's a matter of safety, it's a matter of public safety, it's out of our hands. We have people being released, we have gang members being released, that where I was able to keep them out of the Coachella Valley, they don't even come before the parole boards anymore. So, and they're going wherever they want. It is time for the council, for the community, to understand what the police departments throughout this valley, from Desert Hot Springs on down, are going to be going through. And we need to give them every bit of support and help we can, in every one of these agreements. So, I would urge that you support these agreements fully, and look for, even, I know it's squeezing, any additional help that we can do, especially in the field of drugs, because we all know what happened down valley with a drug addict, who shouldn't have been on the streets, and it happened again in Oceanside. We've got to do what we can to keep these people off the streets, in this hard time of budgets, on the state level. And I feel sorry for our chief here in our police department, because they're really going to be taxed to the max. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments?
Mr. Mayor, member of city council, I'm Margaret Rhodes. I am, for the next few days, your city librarian. And I can be found up at 300 South Sunrise Way. I will be leaving my wonderful job as city librarian on Monday, and I'm going to be embarking on a whole new adventure of retirement. It is absolutely amazing to me that in my twenty years, things could have flown by so fast. When I came to the city in 1983, I wasn't exactly the youngest staff member, but I certainly wasn't a senior citizen. But that's really changed. And trust me, the only advantage I can see to it is that I can get into the movies for a couple of bucks less. But I do get to stay home now and play with my new puppy Daisy, and that's a good thing. I have seen many changes here over the years, most of them, almost all of them, to the good. In the departments which I mostly work with, increased sophistication and professionalism have made a marked improvement on the way we used to do things. And at least when regulations and directives of various kinds don't get in the way, things have improved greatly. There are lots of new faces around City Hall, and people I haven't met. But I can say with certainty that I'm proud to have been a member of the city of Palm Springs team. And I thank all of you, and the staff, whose paths and mine have crossed over the years, for your courtesy and friendliness, and when needed assistance. I would like to give, if I may, just a little state of the library message. I am leaving a library, of which I am extremely proud. As members of the community, I hope you are too. The library staff is the best. Every person there understands what a library should be, and they serve it wonderfully, each according to his or her skills. It is a truly cohesive and cooperative group, professionals and non-professionals alike. And they are together improving the way that we do business, on everything from marketing to automation. We have just about caught up with the library technology revolution. The new Cersei Circulation System with the Ibistro catalog installed now on our own network is starting to work beautifully. That is a major Y project, and we are certainly grateful to the voters of Palm Springs for giving us that revenue that allows us to move into the 21st century. The Smart Access Manager, or SAM, we are installing. It should be operational next week, and it will allow our customers to sign up for public computer use, and will time them for their thirty minutes, once they are on the computers, which should eliminate the fistfights, and the name-calling, and the yabbats that staff has to deal with now. There are thirteen public access computers. We have a wonderful new librarian, who is a digital archivist, and he is weeding the huge local history files that we have, and is digitizing, and eventually, they will be available through the catalog. Frank Bogert's 1987 book, Palm Springs First Hundred Years, has at last been printed. Two years of my life there, and it's been redesigned, and it's selling very well. I think we've made about forty thousand dollars so far on it. At Sunrise, oh, by the way, Frank Bogert was just named by the library board to be the William Dean Award winner for the year. At Sunrise, and the Palm Springs Public Library Genealogy Collection are two more books, which have been published also. The Prickly Pears Video Histories of Palm Springs Pioneers, which we did, gosh, about eighteen years ago now, I think, have been preserved now on DVD. We were losing quality, and Channel Seventeen people and Rick Lee have done a wonderful job with that. We have morphed the virtual university into a project that really does work now, and it's called the Learning Center. We offer reasonably priced computer classes, and we offer video conferencing, which is being used a lot now, especially since the advent of SARS and terrorism and all of that. People are really enjoying using that equipment to come in, and means they don't have to travel. And TLC is barely, but it is paying its own way. The literacy program and the youth room have brought in partnerships with the local Even Start and Heaven's Head Start programs, and the adult school, and both have many, many more participants than ever. One children's program this spring had four hundred and eighty-five kids out in the patio with their parents, doing great things together. And we are well on our way to registering about six hundred kids for the summer reading club. The Palm Springs Library has received, we just found out, a grant for a major exhibition from NASA slash ALA, or American Library Association. We are one of only one hundred libraries selected from sixty-four thousand in the country. It is called NASA at Your Library, and it will run for the entire month of October. It's going to be a huge exhibit that will take the entire public area around the atrium. In California, only Glendale Public Library and San Francisco Public were chosen to display this. Very proud of that. With the sale of the former Crocker Branch building and gifts and bequests, the trust fund has prospered and allowed us to renovate the exterior of the building, and to purchase all of our computers, equipment, and extras. And of course, the Friends of the Library continue to provide enormous, great moral support, as well as financial support. When customers walk into the library, they can immediately see the beneficial effects of having an independent library fund, trust fund, and friends, as well as the major Y revenues that were dedicated to the library. The building, the oak furniture, part of the shelving, and the staff are paid for from the general fund, and we are truly grateful for that. It is a beautiful facility and a wonderful staff. However, the specially-woven carpet on the floor with the Kewee Indian symbols, the fish pond, all of the computers, the literacy coordinators, the microfilm reader printers, the entire circulation system, in fact, three of them over thirty years, the Ibistro catalog, the security guard, the improvements to the interior and the exterior, as well as about a third of the books and materials, have all been paid for by private sources administered, either by the trustees or by the Friends. By giving us a measure of independence from the general fund through the generous contributions of private donors, we have made the library a vibrant, community-oriented center of culture, education, and recreation. In my twenty years here, I do not believe that we have asked the city for so much as a chair. While the trustees continue to set policy and provide administrative direction, our only direction can be forward. They will make it possible to renovate and enlarge the library, to constantly improve and add new technologies, and to, in general, keep this facility one to be admired, in and for itself, of course, and as a high-quality piece of the economic development package offered by the city. I ask on their behalf for your continued wonderful support. I am grateful to the city council, which has always been very protective of the library's activities and its role in the community. I am grateful to a series of wonderfully strong trustees, and particularly appreciative to the Friends of the Library, who over all of the years have given so much, both, again, in moral support and in financial support. I am grateful to all of the staff in the city, to our customers, to our vendors, to my predecessor, to Josette, and to the very talented, very best library staff around. I have requested of Josette that there not be a citywide farewell party. That is not because I am not fond of all of you, it is just because, indications to the contrary, I'm really not much of a party person. And I prefer to offer instead my heartfelt thanks to you through this message. I will be here on Monday, June 23rd, in my office, when we are having a small open house. Please come by if you can, and that means all of the staff and all of the community. And since I cannot imagine living anywhere but in Palm Springs, I will be here, seeing you and watching everything. Thank you very, very much.
Well, Margaret, thank you for twenty wonderful years. I've watched you for at least fifteen of those years, and it's been a true pleasure working with you as a trustee, as a friend, and as an elected official. You give great professionalism to the task you have mastered, and we appreciate all your efforts. All right, with that, council, let's turn to our consent calendar. What's before us are items one through nineteen. Item nine has been withdrawn, and item eighteen has also been withdrawn. And I'm requesting that item eight be pulled for a separate discussion. Are there any other abstentions you'd like to note at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain on two warrants. 988-625, 988-729 has been related.
Thank you, Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Anything else? I can ask the question on eight, and we can take one action if it's possible. On eight, which is the Mesquite Avenue widening, I have just a couple of quick questions. I would ask that we evaluate the ability for us to place the stop signs that are ultimately planned for in the design, in place now. We acknowledge there are some problems with that street, with high speeds and with traffic. We're going to modify that. It's going to take us six months for engineering and six months for construction, but the problem exists today. And I'd like to know if, in fact, staff would give us a response as to whether we can put those stop signs in, that are going to be there anyway, put them in now. And then the second issue I have is the issue of the two-lane versus one-way. Can we get a description as to the need for the two lanes, if we're going to reduce speeds?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, the two-lane versus one-way, the description that you want as to the reduction of speeds, I guess I'm a little unclear.
I would ask you to explain to both the council and the community the need for the two lanes. There's been some requests for a single lane, and why you need two. Just for clarification for the audience.
It's two lanes, one in each direction, as opposed to the general plan designation of four lanes, two in each direction. So, through the hearings and the various public meetings and so forth, the conceptual design agreed upon was a two-lane roadway, one in each direction, with a median separating that through a roadway from a one-way, one-lane with parking adjacent to the park, frontage road, if you will.
Okay, one lane each way, then. Okay, now, the issue of allowing the stop signs that will be built eventually, can be placed in there sooner, addressing the idea of people speeding through there, as they are currently doing.
Well, stop signs, we could certainly consider that, but I think the whole idea of putting the stop sign by the youth center was coupled with the raised intersection, and adequate signage and so forth, showing that people would have to slow down and then have to stop there. And I think we would have to take a look at whether just putting stop signs out there is a safe thing to do. They're not speed devices, so they aren't really going to control the speed. I think probably at Villa Road is a little more likely to do without the other, without the other improvements that are part of this. But this design needs to have everything put in at some of those, at those other two intersections to be totally safe. And if you recall, that was a raised intersection, and with the median and everything to do that. So, we will certainly look at all three of them, but my gut-hunt is that the safe one at this time, without anything else going in there, might only just be Villa Road.
Villa Road. I think that might, in fact, help. If you can give us some consideration, I'd be satisfied with that. Okay? I appreciate that, David, thank you. Any other questions the council wishes to ask on this item, or any others? Otherwise, we'll entertain an action. On the consent agenda, again, nine and eighteen have been withdrawn. Nine were withdrawing because Ms. Rella Spurgeon has a conflict, and without it, we have no quorum. And on number eighteen, it is being withdrawn at the request of the city manager. Correct?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Oden, and second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It is three-oh, it's deemed unanimous. Let's turn now to our public hearings. Item twenty is Camino Alturas Sewer Refund. I'll ask for your staff report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. This is a sewer issue hearing, and I would ask our director of public works and city engineer to give the staff report. Thank you. Unless, of course, he would like to yield to me.
Yes.
In which case, I would yield to the assistant engineer. Go ahead, David, thank you.
Sorry. Oh, boy. Staff report's gone. I'll do it from memory.
Do you want to use mine, David?
Pardon me?
Do you want to use mine?
Oh, thank you. This item is the sewer reimbursement agreement on properties on Camino Alturas. This was brought to you, I believe, last November. And at the time, one of the council directions was to do some investigation into some, at the request of one of the property owners. That work was all done. We had two more property owners' meetings, and have reached what we feel is consensus with the property owners. Just to refresh your memory, this is a sewer that was put in by one property owner with potential benefit to several others. And he has requested that when those others, if and when those others connect to the sewer, that they reimburse him his fair share of the cost of putting that sewer in. Something in my throat. So, staff recommends a hearing be held, and the council consider testimony and approve the reimbursement agreement.
Thank you, David. Council questions on this, before we open the public hearing? Seeing none. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on item twenty, please come forward at this time. Very good. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, turn to council for their action. Council?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second it, but I have a question.
All right, Ms. Rella Spurgeon, second by Mr. Oden. Questions, Mr. Oden, sir?
I just want a little clarification on the last paragraph. The owner of 380 Camino Alturas, what is that final agreement?
The owner, Dr. Gargory, that paragraph? The final agreement is that he had, Dr. Gargory had applied for repair of his onsite system prior to this agreement being put in place. And he asked that consideration be given, that he be allowed to proceed with that.
Expand his systems.
Expand his systems, which apparently is failing on his property. Should that prove, should he want to do that? He just wanted the option left open, since he applied prior to the agreement. He just wanted the option left open since he applied prior to the agreement.
Okay.
And staff didn't see a problem with that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, this is a motion by Ms. Rella Spurgeon, a second by Mr. Oden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's deemed unanimous, 3-0. Item 21 will be also withdrawn based on a lack of quorum. I believe Ms. Rella Spurgeon has a conflict, is that correct? So we'll withdraw.
Proximity.
Proximity, so we'll withdraw that until we have quorum that can handle that. Item 22 would be case 5.094, PD 283, tentative tract MAC 31263, Christman Desert Investments LLC. Mr. Reddy, I'll turn to you for your staff report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is residential condominiums, and I would ask Mr. Evans, our Director of Planning and Zoning, to give the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a condominium subdivision map for a 2.12 acre parcel. It's a single lot for condominium purposes for a 30-unit condominium project located at the northeast corner of Indian Canyon Drive, Francis Drive. This is a project that includes two-story condominium units. The planning commission did review this project at two meetings, at its May 14th meeting. They continue the item to take a look at some site plan changes. At their May 28th meeting, they reviewed a revised site plan that included a number of site plan adjustments based upon planning commission direction. And an overview of the project is provided in the staff report, and we hope the council appreciates what we've done as we gave you a quick administrative report and then attached the planning commission report so that you could see the progress on the project through the planning commission. The dwelling units range in size from 1,600 to 1,900 square feet. There are some fairly minor adjustments requested in the planned development district having to do with carport setbacks on Sunny View, as well as setbacks to the condominium units along Francis Drive. I'll show you those reductions so that you can see where they are, and they're basically within the realm of minor adjustments that, under normal circumstances, could be approved by the Director of Planning and Zoning under a minor modification-type permit. That is a quick overview of the project administratively. I will let you know that it appears that we printed the conditions of approval from the planning commission. We have to make some adjustments to those, so if the council action could include allowing me to make the adjustments the planning commission recommended, they're relatively minor. They have to do with phasing of the project and the commission's recommendation to let the developer phase the project, as well as revising the setbacks to match up with the most recent site plan. And if the applicant has any other concerns based upon these, they'll bring them up. I have a feeling most of the concerns, if the applicant brings them up, probably are based upon, we slipped in the wrong set of conditions in the report, it appears. We got the date right, but we didn't make all the adjustments in the conditions, and they are relatively minor and don't affect the site plan, as I recall. With that, let me show you the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Did anybody say that the skate park is opening in October of 2003? The project plan that was reviewed and ultimately approved by the planning commission is this site diagram here. The planning commission looked at the plan, and I'll show you what they did in the hearing process, and I think everyone agrees it's a better site plan and will work better for the neighborhood as well as the residents. Indian Canyon is located here, Francis Drive, Sunny View Lane. We've got an existing apartment complex located here, single-family residential here, apartment complex across the street, and Indian Canyon as a major thoroughfare to the west. The project is a series of condominium units oriented in a north-south direction with a horseshoe-type driveway. That was the key change the planning commission worked with the applicant on. Two pool areas in this location. The units are two stories. They each have one covered carport and one adjacent parking space in addition to guest parking, so it meets all the parking criteria. There are some bay parking conditions or driveway conditions along Sunny View, but they match up to the driveway conditions that you have across the street with the single-family residential units. This is not a gated project. It's a little bit too tight at the entryways to be able to really put gates in, so it's going to be an open and ungated project in the future based upon this approval. With regards to the setback conditions, it meets the setback criteria along Indian Canyon Drive. There'll be a series of staggered walls to provide privacy in courtyards for individual units. There is a reduction in setback to 6 feet, or 16 feet, 10 inches, if I can read this without my glasses, along this setback condition here, and that's down from a 20-foot setback. And there are some staggering elements relative to the buildings, including the second story. On the Sunny View side of the project, there's a setback reduction to the carports only. The 25-foot setback is located here, and then the carport columns will be located at 20 feet, and then they'll can a lever four feet back into the required setback, so the edge of the carports will be 16 feet back from the property line, and there's plenty of room for four cars to fit in that area. So these particular units have not only two parking spaces, they are, these units have the required covered parking space, they also have the ability to stack another car in, and guest parking is located up in these areas. The original plan was a little bit different. It had one driveway along the north with dead-end conditions in this area, and this would have been a one-way drive with an exit onto Indian Canyon, and it just, the planning commission was uncomfortable with that and felt people would probably use it as a two-way drive, and you'd have a conflict at this location. I think everybody felt that the applicant really responded very well to the commission concerns and came up with a much better site plan for the overall project. The building elevations are shown above. It's a series of one- and two-story type situations. It's a very contemporary type design, or a postmodern design, or a mid-century design, depending on how you interpret architecture. The colors are a little bit toned down over what's rendered just because of the graphic technique. They're shown here. The planning commission and design review board were very pleased with the architecture of the project and how that worked out. Mr. Mayor, with that long explanation of the project, the only item before the council tonight is the approval of a boundary map with one lot. Thank you very much. The actual project was, the approval was final with the planning commission.
The issue is only the lot in itself, the boundary itself. The architecture's been approved?
The architecture and site plan were approved by the planning commission, and no appeals were filed.
Okay, council, questions on this project before we open the public hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, I mixed this one up with the previous project. This is a planned development district, so the council is reviewing the site plan elevation, colors, material, as well as that exciting one-lot subdivision. Excuse me on that. The previous project, it was just a map before the council.
There you go. All right, now, before we open the public hearing, questions or comments? Hold them will. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address city council, item 22, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll turn to council for comments. Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Now, there's an, there are two apartment complexes on either side of this proposed site.
There's an apartment complex across the street to the south, and then there's one to the, immediately adjacent to the north.
Now, are they, one of them is gated and one is not, is that correct?
The, my recollection to the south, the apartment complex is gated, and my recollection to the north, that is an ungated project.
Do we have any other condominium projects in the area that are ungated?
I, I'm not sure about the project that's further to the south on the corner of Racket Club. I think it's Villa del Sol. I don't think it's gated. I think it's pretty tight as you come in on the access roadway. I don't recall if we have any gated. The issue here is not a whether or not the city has said you can't gate it. The issue is that they've been, they've used all of the site, and there's not enough room to safely put gates in, to have turnaround and backup and maneuvering for gates as you back out of, you know, you'd end up with people backing out on Francis. So I don't think the project is proposed to be gated, nor do I think you could even fit it in if you wanted to. You'd probably have to lose units to put the gates in.
Okay, that's all.
I've got a couple of comments. Where are we on required open space?
The project meets open space requirements, and let me give you the percentages. The building coverage is 26, and the project complies with the open space requirement. I didn't put in the exact amount, but the required amount in the R2 zone is 50%. I don't believe they're asking for any reductions. I'll skim the staff report real quickly, Mr. Mayor.
Doug, I'm trying to find 50% open space in this plan, and I can't see it. What am I missing? I mean, I see a lot of driveway, I see a lot of patio, I see a lot of carport. I don't see, per se, much green space. There's no, no open landscaped area. It's a best minimal landscape between building and drive. I'm trying to figure out where the 50% calculation is. Is it based on textured concrete? How have we allowed this to attain 50%? Because you'd have to say to me that half that building, half that site, has got an open space coefficient to it, and I'm trying to figure out where it is.
It's basically going to be found to a large degree in these courtyards that you really don't, aren't really rendered in here, so these are open areas. So if you add up the perimeter, the parking, or the pool areas, and then all of these courtyards, they really show a little bit better in this exhibit, so each unit has a courtyard like this with another one on the other side, or a courtyard along this line, and, you know, according to the calculations provided by the applicant, they're just, just at about 50%.
What was the planning commission's reaction to the colors? Inasmuch as we have used these colors, similar greens in downtown, and there was a little bit of an outcry by the community, what's the planning commission's reaction?
I think the planning commission, you know, had a mixed reaction at first. One commissioner said, "Make sure you keep the green, I love it." Other commissioners looked at the renderings and had a concern, but I really think when they, they took a look at the actual colors, relative to the architecture, they were comfortable. We made sure the commission looked at it carefully, as well as design review. It is going to be striking, and this is the type of project that people will either like the design and the colors, or they won't, and the "won'ts" will probably be fairly strong about it.
What was the rationale for the reduction in setback? Is the lot substandard? What are the outstanding circumstances that permitted a reduction in setback, especially interfacing a residential community across the street?
Yeah, the planning commission looked at the lot and just felt that, you know, while it's not particularly substandard, that the overall design of the project, the fact that they're, they're still under density, I mean, they, I don't think they maxed the thing out, and the commission felt that the fact that the relief on Sunny View Drive is really an open carport and only the can-a-levered portion of the carport, they felt that as you come into, you know, the south side, that because of the roadway and the fact you had multifamily across the street, that the reduction that was requested was relatively minor, and it worked, and, you know, to not grant those reductions, I think the commission was concerned about knocking units out and whether or not the project could be completed relative to the overall cost of off-site improvements as well as overhead utilities. We've talked to the applicant about that. This is a fairly high, high-cost project to develop, and I think the council's been apprised of the utilities that run along Indian Canyon. They're relatively expensive underground.
I've got a concern with the site plan. I don't, I don't feel comfortable at all with the manner in which the 50% open space was attained. It is basically a drive experience more than is a pedestrian experience. There is nothing that encourages anyone in these units to come outside of the units. There's no common space. The pools are an afterthought at best, secondary. There is really no, there is no pedestrian-oriented circulation on the site. There is no green space available for public benefit or view. I am concerned about the green and the red. This could be a controversial color, those who love it, love it, and those who don't, don't. I think they're too strong and much too much of a contrast, especially based on the context that these buildings are being placed in the neighborhood. The fabric has indeed been established. This is not a random piece of property in a vacant area of town. It's an established community project and fabric, and I think this would be construed as somewhat invasive to the neighbors. I could not accept that green nor that use of the red, it's too bold. And I, and I'm, although I'm sensitive to the idea of setbacks for the purposes of units, you could use that rationale to reduce setbacks to any number you want because you want to get more units. The reality is, the setback is what the setback is. It's there for quality of life issues. It's the interface of your development against the existing, and I find that unnecessary at this point. I don't see the need for it. A modification in design of the units and otherwise could, in fact, have been done without a request for modifying setbacks. Okay? What's the council's pleasure on this project? Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
In terms of the open space, I didn't see the 50%, but with what, with the description that you gave within the courtyard, I can see some additional space. So obviously, you must think it's close enough. If this were an apartment complex, I think I'd be more concerned about some of the issues that, that the mayor has raised, but since it's a condominium project, I think people tend to do more things on their own than, than in an apartment complex. The colors have gone past the planning commission and architectural review, and, I mean, we've had a lot of issues over the years with, with color. As a matter of fact, we were reminiscing when Vons came in, and we didn't want them to use their traditional red.
Staples.
And staples, and we wanted to, them, to modify them to colors that we thought were more acceptable. With that, I will move the resolution.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Oden and second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. I'll ask for clarification that you are adjusting the planning commission's conditions and recommendations, including phasing and setback on site plan?
For Doug's.
For Doug's comments, is that a concurrence by both?
Yes.
Second?
Yes, that's fine.
Doug, is that clearly what you want on that recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there may be a couple of other minor adjustments, but they don't affect the site plan and the applicant. I don't think we'll object.
Very good.
They were the types of things they asked the planning commission to look at.
Good, thank you, Mr. Evans. With that, I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rospergen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
No, it passes two, one. Item two has been, um, I think we're good to go on, on 23, aren't we?
Uh, yes.
All right, we'll move to item 23 then.
Mr. Mayor and, uh, members of council, this is an annual ministerial act of putting delinquent taxes on the property tax rolls, and with that, I would ask that you move the res, or recommend passage to the resolution.
I'll move the resolution.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but this is a public hearing, and I would ask that we allow the public to come forward and give testimony. Are there any questions of staff support? I know you're eager to get out of here. Uh, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on item 23, please come forward at this time.
We were ready.
We are ready.
Anyone here for item 23? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Now, council, what's your pleasure?
Oh.
I don't make the rules. My job is just to facilitate them, that's all.
And I will second it.
Motion for approval by Ms. Rospergen, and second by Mr. Oden.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rospergen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 3-0, deemed unanimous. Item 24 will be, uh, pulled. Uh, let the record show that I have a conflict of interest in dealing with the airport master plan based on an FPPC ruling. We're going to pull that until we can get quorum. Council comments, announcements, or interagency reports at this time? None?
Um, I, that is, uh, I think you were going to reschedule that hearing date.
Number 24?
Well, I, in other words, I think, uh, staff will indicate.
To.
What would be the next date it would be go to? Okay, just so anyone is aware, um, the city clerk will move it to the meeting on the 16th.
16th?
16th.
That'll be July 16th?
Do you need a motion to that effect?
No. No, you don't. Well, I'm sorry, July 2nd, pardon me, July 2nd, this is the 18th of June, I'm sorry, David. It'd be July 2nd, I'll just do that administratively. We don't need a motion, because you don't have a quorum.
Right. Counsel, comments, announcements, or interagency reports? Uh, council, I would just like to tell you that, uh, the Sunline SSG issue is continually in the newspaper. Uh, I have compiled, uh, a number of the documents and reports. I'm going to give you a copy of it and allow you to go through it, and I would be willing to ask any, uh, questions of Mr. Ready. I'll brief him, and perhaps he can address any concerns you have as this issue unfolds. Thought I'd give you that extensive amount of documents, so you can try to catch up to it. Uh, we'll turn to our legislative calendar. Item 25 is the Convention Center Expansion Bond Issue Reimbursement Visitors Information Center. I'll ask Mr. Ready for his staff report, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a companion, uh, resolution to the, uh, finance authority, uh, action that you took earlier. And, um, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that the resolution if council adopts this evening would adopt the same language, adding the convention center that we did in the previous resolution, so it's clear. Uh, and I would ask, uh, Mr. Canar, the finance director, to give a, a brief presentation exactly what this, uh, action does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Mr. Canar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's a concurring action for the action you took as a finance authority.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
I will move the resolution with the language changes, subject to the approval of the city manager.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Oden, and second by Ms. Rospergen. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rospergen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, it is 3-0, it's deemed unanimous. Item 26 is the Municipal Code Amendment for Drug Paraphernalia. I'll ask for a staff report, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, one of the things we had asked the city attorney's office to do is to take a look at several of our ordinances, looking for ordinances that were outdated and needed, uh, that some attention or brought up to date. This is one of those cases, and is recommended to the police chief, and is here before you this evening, and this is on drug paraphernalia. Uh, it revises chapter 11.92, and I don't know if the, uh, either the city attorney or the police chief have comments to make, or if you have questions of them, but this is in essence, uh, bringing up-to-date, uh, older ordinance that we have on the book into conformance with, uh, what the city attorney has said would be state law. Thank you.
Very good. Again, this repeals our, uh, ordinance, and then defers to state law for, uh, for legal activity?
Right, there's a state, uh, code provision on the display of narcotic paraphernalia, and, uh, which basically preempts our section.
Very good, thank you. Counsel? Questions, pleasure, or action?
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Oden, and second by Ms. Rospergen, and I would ask that the maker and the second allow reading of title, waving of text?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll read title and wave text?
This would be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, repealing chapter 11.92 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to the display and sale of drug paraphernalia.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rospergen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, it is 3-0. Uh, that was our first reading, we'll bring that back in, is it 30 days? Two weeks? Two weeks, very good. Let's turn to item 27, uh, the Meat Code Amendment for Sewers.
I, I think what we would indicate on this is, uh, there may be a conflict of interest, uh, for Councilmember Spurgeon on this, so I think, uh, since we don't have that fully determined, we would, uh, pull this to your next meeting.
We'll pull that, losing, uh, because we'll lose quorum if Genie steps out, and we'll bring that back at a future date when we have a better understanding. Thank you, Mr. Alshire. Counsel, if we'll turn our attention now to item 28, the Santa Rosa-Santa Cento Mountains National Monument Plan, and I'll turn to Mr. Ready for his staff's report, please.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would ask, Doug Evans, our Director of Planning and Zoning, who is our resident expert on such matters, uh, to give the report on this issue. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We had a study session last week on this item. We've provided you with the written materials, not only in your packet, uh, but prior to, uh, last week's study session. Um, I think the, uh, the key issues in the national monument that we'd like the plan to reflect, and reflected early and often in the plan, is the fact that the legislation that was adopted by, by, uh, Congress, basically said, "The plan will not affect private property, will not establish buffers around the monument, and that it will not affect local, uh, planning efforts." Um, that information is in the plan, but it's not brought to the same level of attention as the other issues relative to, um, public open space, uh, views, wildlife resources, and the like. Uh, so that's a key issue. The other thing that we've tried to do is, is keep, uh, property owners abreast. Uh, I know Palm Hills Land Corporation is submitting a letter, uh, that has many of the same issues outlined, uh, from a little different perspective, and the Desert Riders, uh, Trail Fund has submitted a letter, and we provided that in your packet. Uh, they have an expert in trails and public access, and, and they really, um, put a very strong point relative to the issues on public access and trails. Uh, would, uh, like to just make one modification to the exhibit, and, uh, that modification would be, just so you would know, on page, uh, 28B5, uh, the fourth item, uh, listed at the bottom of the page under attachments, uh, because that project no longer has been filed with the city, unfiled with the city, it has not been approved, uh, there's nothing pending. I'd have to take that out, because we can't advocate a project that we don't have before us.
Let, let me get clear, 28B5, what are you striking? Mountain Falls?
Uh, under the attachments at the bottom of the page?
Yes.
Number four. I don't have an approved project or an application to attach here.
Thank you, sir.
Um, with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, that completes our report, and, uh, I'll certainly try to answer any questions. I would like to tell you that it, uh, was an easy report to read for a federal document, and they completed it on time, and the BLM staff needs to be commended, even though they still need to make a few changes, uh, based upon staff's recommendation to the council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Counsel, questions on item 28, the Santa Rosa-Santa Cento Mountain National Monument Plan?
Mr. Mayor?
Oden.
I think the presentation was also very, very good at our study session, no question. And with that, I will move the resolution.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Oden, and second by Ms. Rospergen. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 3-0, deemed unanimous. Item 29 is the Workers' Compensation Insurance Renewal. Mr. Ready, your staff report, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, insurance in the public sector and in private sector for that matter, but is very cyclical, and in those times when, uh, the market is good, we get it at a reasonable cost, and we have a fair amount of protection. Those times when it's, it's just cost prohibitive, we go without it, we're self-insured, and we just live with that reality. Unfortunately, we're in that in-between transition time. The way this insurance market is today, the premiums are somewhat just below cost prohibitive. So, council, you're faced this evening with a, a, a decision on our workers' comp insurance, and as you know, workers' comp in the state of California, uh, if not across the entire country, is, is not in a very good, uh, situation, environment at this, this stage. Um, that being said, uh, going out into the marketplace, uh, the best that we can ha-have in terms of cost is before you. So, in essence, the policy that is before you is a $273,360 premium, for in essence, what amounts to a $1 million deductible. So, it is, is a very high premium, um, and the deductible is very high. And so, it's just about up there to being cost prohibitive, but not entirely, because we may very well have that incident that's catastrophic, that could be a $2 million claim. So, it is an election that you have to make this evening, and to try and make that decision easier for you, uh, we have our insurance consultant, our broker here, uh, Mr. Ross Jones, also Sue Mills, who is, uh, doing our risk issues, she is here, also our Director of Human Resources, and I would ask both of them to approach the microphone and to give a report on what they found on workers' comp, and they certainly will be available to answer any and all of your questions. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, just this evening, Mr. Jones brought us a bargain. Rather than 273,000, uh, he's brought us a last-minute quote for 238,000. So, it is some savings of, um, I had it written down here, $37,000.
Thirty-five thousand, yeah, thirty-seven thousand dollars, yeah. So, Sue, you know, I'm reading your staff report on 29A, and background, number three, "Some excess workers' comp markets have backed off and are only willing to write accounts that have payrolls of $200 million or more." Well, inasmuch as not all of us have that kind of payroll, what do the rest of the people in the cities and the businesses do? What, what are you supposed to do?
We're in a very difficult market. There, since, uh, 2022 markets have pulled out of California or gone into receivership, that were writing workers' comp, that are no longer writing workers' comp.
Pulled out of California, but still provide services?
In other states.
Elsewhere in the nation.
We're, we're in a workers' comp crisis in California.
Again.
Because of the benefits and, and all of the problems relating to that. Um, and as a result of that, of course, uh, all of the companies who are currently writing are now impacted with those who pulled out. The other problem that has occurred just recently, the ICRA MA, which is, was the insurance pool that you were in, they have not been able to put together their workers' compensation program, have had to join with CSAC, and as of yesterday, had still not resolved that. So, we have another, almost 100 company, I mean, uh, cities attempting to come into the open market and find coverage, which is just not available for them to find. So, there, there, the win-win of this is, we were already in the market, we already have a quote. Uh, if we were to go back into the market today, would probably be $200,000 higher than it currently is, we're being quoted as of today.
Our current carrier, uh, employers' reinsurance that we've been with for a number of years, uh, sent us a notice of non-renewal, which was somewhat surprising to me personally, till I found out that they were actually pulling out of the market in California.
So, we shouldn't take it personally?
So, we shouldn't take it personally.
Yeah. Well, I was, um, I was somewhat surprised that we only had to pay $60,000 more over last year in their staff report, but to find out that you've got better numbers than that at tonight's meeting of 2:38, is the same carrier?
No, this is with the, um, National Union, which is one of the AIG companies, largest workers' comp writer in state, I mean, in the, in the world.
Sue, you're asking for a substitute resolution?
Yes.
If we could, could you state the name for the clerk, please, of the insurance company?
National Union Insurance Company.
And the exact amount?
It's, the exact amount is $237,124.
And the terms are the, are the, are the terms, are the same as what we have before us?
Terms are actually better than what you've given me.
Well, I mean, in terms of the, the, the amount, the million dollars, thank you.
For one year.
Now, the minute order that's in packet hasn't got that kind of detail. Um, I, I defer to Clerk for her recommendation, as I want us to move this minute order. You accept, uh, the minute order as it is, and have the, the, the information as noted?
Yes, that's just fine.
Okay. So, it's National Union?
National Union.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll move the minute order.
With the, with the.
For the changes.
Yes, I'll second that.
I'm going to move the minute order with the recommended changes, uh, with, uh, National Union for $237,124. Dollars and 24 cents.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, may I ask a question? Uh, the, the rating on this company, Mr. Jones?
They're an A-plus, 15, A-plus, plus 15, largest, best rating in the, in the industry.
Thank you.
Okay, good question, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rospergen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, 3-0, deemed unanimous. Thank you for your work, even at the last minute, to bring us the best prize. Um, item 30 is airport liability, the Aero Squadron Aircraft. Uh, let's turn, uh, to Mr. Ready for a staff report on these issues.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, number 30, um, bundles the rest of our insurance packages, um, they are come due the 1st of July, so this is our attempt to get them before you in a timely manner, before these policies expire. Uh, they represent the range of policies with the range of prices. Uh, many of those have increased, some have decreased, and as you go through that list, uh, you will see, uh, the differences in there. Also in the report are the results of Mr. Jones' foray into the marketplace and what he was able to come up with. Um, again, uh, we recommend your approval, and Mr. Jones is here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Ready. Counsel, questions? Um, I, I've got one, um, and I turn to Mr. Alshire for this one. Uh, page 30A3, under attachment, item 3, cites a quote, and it goes into PERMA, and then if you turn to 30A18, is the PERMA piece. Um, I just want to know where we're at with our PERMA issues that are not related to this, that we deal with elsewhere? If there's any relationship between, uh, the lawsuit and this? No nexus?
Um, well, we do, we do have some, um, disputes going. Um, I don't really want to publicly comment on the nature of those disputes.
Okay to take this action tonight, without, uh, placing us in any jeopardy in the other action?
Um, well, I, it's, it sounded like Troy had something you wanted to say.
I think I can add a little bit to that. We simply, uh, asked for a quotation from PERMA, uh, in doing our due diligence to obtain, uh, pricing for insurance, we, of course, turn to those insurance providers or risk pools, uh, that are out there, PERMA being one of them. Uh, this does not, uh, award anything to PERMA, this simply is a quote that we received from them, so there is nothing here that will upset or affect, uh, the issue that, uh, the city attorney spoke of.
Certain names pop certain flags out of the box, this one obviously popped a flag.
Obviously.
Not a factor, though, we're not taking the action with PERMA at this time, going with other providers.
Which is, so it's not, from what Troy's saying, it's just a competing quote, and we're not proposing to go with them.
Very good, thank you. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, or your pleasure at this time?
Move the resolution.
Motion for approval by Ms. Rospergen? Motion for approval by Ms. Rella Spurgeon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oden. Any additional comments? See none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Three oh deemed unanimous. Item thirty-one is the 2003-2004 allocated positions and compensation plan. Mr. Sturretti, your staff report. Ross, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Per our discussions on the budget and previous study sessions and the previous council meeting, you had approved the budget, and we had had discussions on the allocations, reclassifications of several positions. This allocation plan before you this evening is the manifestation and result of the personnel side of that discussion and approval, and the only change that you had not seen from that discussion is a change that has come to my attention, that one position needed to be reclassified. It does not include any cost whatsoever. It is actually the executive secretary to the city manager, which is my secretary. That position is supposed to be a non-union position, non-classified position, is supposed to be an exempt position by personnel rules. However, for whatever reason, that position was in the union, we're just removing it from the MAPS unit and putting it into the EX or exempt unit. There is no cost associated with that move. Beyond that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the positions that are before you are, as was discussed during the budget discussions, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. And Ms. Mills is here to assist with any other questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturretti. Counsel, questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon.
You say that there is no changes financially for us in that move. What about in the benefits?
The changes beyond what we discussed during the budget process, those changes that netted the savings, those changes are included in here. But I'm talking about beyond that.
There's not a raise in it, correct?
The only additions that, no, the raises occurred in the budget process, which the finance director included.
Talking about the position that you just talked about. There's no raise?
Jan, in...
Yes.
That's correct. There is no compensation raise in that position.
Is there protection for her?
She will serve at the pleasure of the city manager.
Okay. But the benefits, retirement, health?
I would ask Ms. Mills to address that question.
Basically, her benefit, or the benefit packages for the exempt employees are the same currently as they are for the management employees? Okay. Thank you.
The health benefits are? And again, the concern I had, and I had discussions with Mr. Sturretti earlier this week, I wanted to make sure that there were no increases. We're coming off of, obviously, a deficit budget, we've balanced it, and we made a lot of cuts and sacrifices, we're getting some cooperation from many of our bargaining units, and I wouldn't want to go on trying to now spring raises, and I've been reassured that there are no raises in this allocation plan.
And we have the, actually, the budget allocation position was, should be before you, the clerk handed out prior to the meeting for your review, and that cites all the positions that were reclassed, all the changes that occurred in terms of up, down, in, and out. There are some positions that were created based on positions that had retired, traded out, and with a net result of a reduction of salary, of costs. So, again, there should be no difference in this document tonight than what you see before you, and have had that discussion in prior meetings.
Very good. Additional comments or questions? It's the council's pleasure.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Oden and second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's deemed three oh unanimous. Item three is the SMG Management Service Contracts, and I'll turn to Mr. Sturretti for a staff report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this indeed has been a birthing, and I will have the members of the subcommittee on this process can elaborate further on this process. That was Mayor Kleindust and Mayor Protem, Mr. Oden. We're members of the subcommittee dealing with the SMG contract. The SMG contract governs both the convention center and the tourism. That contract ends June thirtieth. We have been in the process of negotiations with them for quite a few months, and, as you know, negotiations many times go down to the wire to get the best deal. We had a couple of goals, and I'm happy to say that I believe we met the goals. Our goals were to lower the base fee, we have done that. Our goal was to make sure that they had incentive to perform, and we have done that. And their incentive is going to be based on room nights, room nights in our hoteliers, it's going to be based on lowering the cost to run the operation of the convention center, and it's going to be based on improving customer service. Finally, the third goal we had was to have them help us with our marketing. We have achieved that as well. If council approves this contract, the terms state that they will supply us $400,000 as a one-time payment, which it is envisioned we can use that for our marketing of the new, bigger, expanded convention center. As you know, that requires a million-dollar expenditure over two years. This $400,000 will go a long way towards defraying that cost. We had not budgeted this year's half a million dollars for marketing in anticipation that the $400,000 coming from SMG would offset that, which reduced our deficit for next year, and, in fact, we were able to negotiate this with the help of the subcommittee, and so this is certainly a good and positive step for us. So, that is the first element. The second element is the tourism. We have focused all our energy on the convention center side, so we are going to be asking you for a ninety-day extension of the tourism contract, so staff and the subcommittee can then continue negotiations on that side of the contract, and then we hope to bring that back to you at that time. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I think, at this point, I would like to perhaps ask the subcommittee if they would like to comment or anything that they would like to say as part of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturretti. Mr. Oden? Mr. Oden and I serve in the subcommittee, I will ask him for his opening comments. Mr. Oden?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, I express my appreciation to staff for the job that they did. I mean, I know we contributed, but they've truly been at it in the birthing process, as it were, to make sure that we brought the city the best possible plan, and I think we've achieved that. I think one of the things that's extremely important is the customer satisfaction component. So, one thing to conduct business is another thing to conduct business well, and I think we have added that particular component to their performance, and I think it'll go a long way for us in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Some of the most significant changes to the contract are as follows. We drove the base fee down, and even the incentive fee for the first two years down. The base and incentive are usually equal, they cannot be, the incentive cannot be more than base, and we managed through negotiations to bring the incentive fee below the level of the base. So, if they do their work, they get $225,000. If they meet all criteria for incentive, they get only $175, not the $225. So, roughly a $50,000 savings if they meet criteria. In the first two years, the number was a little higher because we understood that because of the construction going on, the reduction in the size, there were fewer days involved, it'd be difficult to meet, obviously, incentives, so we gave a little higher number on the opening years, but in the third year, we dropped to $225 to $185. So, we lower the base, and, of course, then the incentive starts matching. But we also made it a little more challenging for them to meet the incentive, and they have to meet, I believe, the room night criteria for anything to trigger at all. And we did work with a number of partners, if you will, in trying to establish these numbers on room nights. This was extensively reviewed by HOPS, the hotels of Palm Springs, which is a large hotels in the downtown area, and some of their other hospitality partners, and these numbers were, in fact, reviewed by Mr. Fife out of CVA, indicating these are good numbers. If they make these numbers, they're doing their job. We also then drove down the idea of the financial performance in trying to bring some of the cost goals down. The opening years have some higher numbers, but we're driving them down. Ultimately, in the last year of the contract, it would be a million dollars down from the one-sixth on the opening. So, we're driving a lot of things down. The customer satisfaction that Mr. Oden put down, two components, of course. One, of course, is the users themselves, the guests, the conventioneers, those who are using the meeting facilities, and then, of course, the hospitality industry. And we did trigger a benefit plan that would allow those people that work here in Palm Springs an opportunity to have incentive bonus, so that the rewards don't go back to corporate, they stay here, giving greater impetus to our people to do a better job because there will be reward for their efforts. So, a little different program. The $400,000, though, that Mr. Sturretti did speak of, that they did contribute towards our marketing program, it is not a five-year commitment through amortization, it's a ten-year. So, that if, in fact, we do not renew after this first five-year with them, then we've got to basically buy out the remaining portion of it. We had no problem with that, our belief was that this would allow us the opportunity to bring them back. If it didn't work out, the next person that came in to take over would actually pay that buyout for us. But it allowed us to get $400,000, and again, gave us the monies we need. It's a very extensive contract, there were some tough negotiations. I enjoyed them thoroughly.
You enjoyed them too.
Oh, I enjoyed them thoroughly, and I think we got some very good numbers and good results. I think the most pleasing aspect, at least from my standpoint as a member of the subcommittee, was that those we are trying to serve, which are the industry partners, were probably the most pleased with the results. Their review is critical, that if it is not serving their needs, putting heads in beds, we're not succeeding. And they were very pleased with the numbers that we worked up for them, so, good to go. Now, you're going to ask for an extension of the current operations for SMG on the convention center? For how many days?
Mr. Mayor, there's actually two resolutions before you. One is the first amendment to agreement for tourism services, that is the ninety-day extension for tourism services.
That enables us the time to now review that part of our contractual obligations.
That's correct.
How much time do you want on the convention center?
And then, secondly, is the third amendment to management agreement, that is, the city attorney had requested that we do a month-by-month. I anticipate that as we move through the month of July, we should be able to wrap that contract up. Since we may or may not be dark in August, I would anticipate that if not the end of July, we'll have it to you the first of September.
So, you want a ninety-day?
Well, it's, David? I would hope we get the convention center done before ninety days. We're going to analyze the whole breakdown and rebuild of the tourism thing, we should be able to get this thing wrapped up. It really falls back on the shoulders of our legal team to put together a document. And I assume you're building a new document, David?
Yeah, well, we're still getting input from everybody that's looking at the old document and getting their revisions. So, we actually, it's been negotiated in concept, so we haven't actually started even drafting a document. I think the concern is that if the council is not around in August, that really doesn't give us very much time. So, the expectation is that it's probably the beginning of September, but the amendment we've got basically says that we're extending the current agreement on a month-to-month basis with the proviso that the conceptual terms, basically the tentative agreement, to the extent that there's an inconsistency, the provisions of the tentative agreement prevail.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Is there a likelihood that you will have it done before August?
No, I don't think so.
Then, we should probably just do the ninety days.
Ninety days, okay. One minor point, the room nights that we set up here, the sixty, eighty, one-hundred, one-oh-five, and one-tens, these are room nights that they have to book, and I brought this up with Mr. Sturretti today in our briefing before this meeting. We have been successful in securing conventions in partnership with the SMG. I cite the Republican Women's Conference, which is coming in based on efforts going to Washington, the renewal of Clean Cities, the Bio one that's coming in, and a number of other ones that are being, hopefully, picked up when we go to Hawaii. What I'm concerned about is, are we going to attribute that to their success and theirs only, or is there a column that the city takes and says that we contributed in part to that? And I just, I don't know how to handle that, because in some respects, we'll be doing some of their work to reach their goal. You may get 10,000 room nights out of those efforts, and that's one-sixth of their goal. And does that reflect as to their efforts, or is that in partnership with us? Do they get credit for half of that, or all of that, or how does that work?
Mayor, we've not discussed that aspect. Certainly could bring it up with them.
Again, if it is their job, and obviously, we're relied upon to assist, and our assistance has been very successful in bringing in conventions.
Maybe you shouldn't go to Hawaii.
I'm going anyway. I'm going to go anyway. I mean, reality speaks to the fact that we've gotten close to 10,000 room nights, the efforts. I'm just wondering if it's a fact you want to bring into the equation or not? If not, let it stand.
Probably something you should have talked about at the table.
Can be. Okay. All right, what you got before you is, obviously, some documents requiring your action. What's your pleasure?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you have one minute order before you, and so there would need to be another minute order prepared for the convention center management agreement for a period of ninety days. So, if you decide to move forward with this, you'll be actually moving two separate minute orders, one for tourism and one for the convention center.
Do we have those in front of us now, Trish?
We have.
Well, I wasn't aware of it, but the city manager just passed me a minute order, and it just for the management of the convention center, and on that particular one, we could modify that to show for a ninety-day period, and then include the caveat that David had mentioned of the terms of the quasi-agreement would take precedence over the original agreement.
Okay, I will move both minute orders, Mr. Mayor, subject to language approval of the city manager.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oden and second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Any additional comments, questions? I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Three oh deemed unanimous. We await the final documentations, and the subcommittee will go to work on the next level of negotiation. Item thirty-three is Palm Springs Disposal Services. Mr. Sturretti?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, through several study sessions, we've had discussions on our waste disposal contract renewal. We've completed those discussions, and we're ready to have you approve the contract this evening, and I would ask Mr. Bootsloff, our assistant city manager, to give the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It seems somewhat ironic that here we are at the end of the agenda, and symbolically, we're also at the end of a journey. The journey I'm speaking about is the conclusion of our negotiations with Palm Springs Disposal Services. It was about a year ago this time that we actually started the process where we had the audits, the findings of an audit that was conducted on behalf of Palm Springs Disposal and the city, which led to some discussion with Palm Springs Disposal on the crafting of a new franchise agreement. What you have before you tonight is the outcome or the byproduct of those lengthy discussions that we've had with Palm Springs Disposal over the many, many months that ensued. The proposed agreement incorporates a number of significant changes, including a new approach to setting rates that results in an overall decrease in hauler revenue. In addition to realigning the setting of rates, Palm Springs Disposal will offer a number of service enhancements to residential, commercial, and industrial customers, including the creation of a new subscription-based service for residential customers. Under this program, residential customers will receive a modest rate reduction ranging from eighteen to forty percent per month, depending on which service level they subscribe to. Overall, the staff feels that the proposed franchise agreement is in the public's best interests, and that it provides a superior level of services at a reasonable price. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I can recap the elements of the proposed agreement. However, those elements were discussed at the city council study session on April ninth. However, I would like to point out that there has been one modification that staff is recommending, and that has to do with term, and we need some council direction on this tonight. At that meeting on April ninth, the Palm Springs Disposal had requested a fifteen-year term as part of this agreement. The city council ultimately gave direction to staff for an eleven-year term with four one-year options for a total of fifteen years. In subsequent conversations with Palm Springs Disposal, they indicated that such an arrangement would be very difficult for them to deal with, due to certain amortization requirements for capitalization of equipment. Staff has reviewed Palm Springs Disposal's information and believes that there is some argument that an extended term would make more sense. Therefore, staff is recommending that instead of the original direction that council had provided, that we've devised a new system in which, in year eight of the agreement, there will be a comprehensive review of Palm Springs Disposal, both from a customer service standpoint as well as from a financial standpoint. If Palm Springs Disposal successfully passes those performance audits that will be conducted, the city council will have the discretion to award an additional four-year extension to the term, giving them a total of fifteen years. Of course, this will be at the city council's discretion and based upon successful passage of those audits. In addition, if, as a result of the audits, it's determined that Palm Springs Disposal pre-tax profit for year seven exceeds eight percent of their total revenue, rates must be reduced in order for the city to consider extending the term. This mechanism will ensure that rates remain at a reasonable and justifiable level throughout the term of the agreement. Since we're in material agreement on the terms and the conditions of this proposed agreement, staff is prepared to answer any questions that the council may have. What we are still working on is some language differences between the city attorney's office and Palm Springs Disposal, and we hope to have those finalized within the next couple of weeks. We do have a draft of the agreement. We do have a draft of the agreement available, should the city council wish to review that. At this point in time, I'd like to take an opportunity to personally thank Bob Kuznick for his patience, understanding, and a lot of hard work that was put into this negotiations, because without him, we certainly would have had a long road to a hoe on this. And with that, members of the city council, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Kuznick is also available, should you have any questions of the holler.
Thank you, Troy. Council questions?
Yes. What is the date of implementation?
If the city council approves the agreement tonight, it would be July 1st for implementation of the rates. The rates would be rolled back for residential customers to the $19.49 level, which is the standard service. It's going to take several months for Palm Springs Disposal to implement the tiered approach. They will be corresponding with residential customers over the next several months, indicating to them the various service levels that are available, and those rates will then go into effect October 1. So there'll be a little bit of a phase-in period for residential customers, but ultimately, they will have, they will realize the rates that are prescribed under this agreement by October 1. But all other customers will have the rates go into effect July 1.
Okay, additional questions?
No.
Troy, would you give more clarification as to the difference in by which they want to trigger this eight-year, their contract? They want to bring this back in eight years?
I think the city attorney may wish to comment on that.
Yeah, let me just comment, because I know when we had the discussion before, in general, we've talked about the fact that the shorter the term, the more flexibility it gives you in looking at things. And obviously, what has happened to this franchise over a period of time is the rates had gotten a little out of skew. The corrective measure, in terms of the 15 years that they wanted, from their standpoint, what you need a longer term for is, if you're buying equipment, you need to be able to amortize it. So you need a longer period of time. So ending up with one-year extensions didn't really do them any good in terms of investing in the franchise. So what we kind of arrived at is the idea that sort of, in the middle of this 15-year period, if you have the opportunity of fully evaluating the economic performance through doing the same sort of financial audit which we did this last time, and the result of that audit put us in a position of being able to negotiate for significant rate decreases. So we picked eight years because, again, it's, the initial term is 11 years. If at the eight-year point, you decide to extend the term, that would give them four more years, really gives them seven years from that date until the expiration. So that's a healthy period of time to continue to invest in the franchise. It's also far enough down the road that we will have quite a bit of history, and if rates did get out of alignment, it gives us a point to look at it, to spend time studying what a reasonable return should be, and then to adjust the rates. Now, the question was, what are the criteria that trigger? How does this really work? At the end of the seventh year, we basically have a lengthy period of time to be able to do a full performance review of the franchise. It's not just a financial audit. We would also look at customer complaints. We could do a survey of customers. We could do a rate survey of surrounding cities to see how the rates compare with surrounding cities. But the most complicated thing, and the most expensive thing, would be to do a full economic audit of their performance. And that would be trying to determine, basically, what their cost structures are. Are they reasonable compared to other waste haulers? And what sort of a profit are they making on their operations? If we found that this was out of alignment, then the city would have the ability to, as a condition of approving this extension, we could, at that point, adjust the rates downward. We could even potentially, if we felt like the rates had been high for a period of time, recapture overpayments. But the other thing that the city could do is just decide, the study could show that everything's fine, everything's in alignment. The city would still have the option, unilaterally, to say, at this point in time, we choose not to extend the agreement. So you wouldn't be under no, even if the study showed no issues, you could decide not to extend the franchise. Now, when you get to the end of your 11 years, you could go through the same process we just went through. You don't necessarily have to go out to bid, but you could go out to bid. So we think this gives you maximum flexibility. It picks a period, potentially in the middle of this franchise, to do a full-blown review of the economics. As a result of that review, you could actually end up, going back through the process we went, just went through, and end up negotiating a reduced rate, and then you could give them four more years, but with the proviso that you've had a chance of dropping the rates down to a lower level. On the other hand, you could decide that, at that point in time, you're just not willing to give them the extension. There'd be no legal compulsion to give an extension. So that's, we think it gives you a lot of flexibility and is probably an improvement over the way we had tried to envision at the study session. I think we've gotten to put more effort into thinking it through.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by council? Otherwise, what's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
I will move the minute order. I'd just like to say one thing before that. This process has been very long and drawn out, and I'd like to express my appreciation to both staff and to Palm Springs Disposal for their cooperation with us throughout this process. You know, one of the first things that our city manager said when he came here is that he was so glad that we didn't have complaints about the trash. And it retains a local business in our community that is concerned about our community. It does lots of good things for our community, and I'm real pleased to see this agreement. So with that, I will move the minute order.
Motion for approval. Mr. Oden, is there a second?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon.
That you passed out, it says that the collection rates at their current level for the next two years, I thought it was three.
Yeah, maybe some clarification is needed. Typically, I don't include the implementation year. That's the year that we're starting into. So it is actually for three years. It's this year that the rates are being set, and then two additional years. Mr. Kuznick was wise to point that out to me earlier today. He also was confused by whether it was two or three, and of course, it is three. I would not let that one slip by, but it is three years for both residential and commercial.
Very good.
And I think another important thing to add, just because it wasn't enumerated in the staff report, that is, we were also successful in reducing the level that they can ask for an increase on an annual basis based on the CPI adjustment. It was 3% for residential and commercial. We've negotiated a reduction of five, or one-half of a percent, so it's 2.5%. So anything in excess of 2.5%, if the CPI is, in addition to that, they would have to ask for council consent to that. So again, some additional rate protection for the community.
And it's 11 years with 1/4.
At the council's option.
Yes.
Okay. Other comments or questions? I'll tell you a long road. We had some problems in the opening, opening couple of yards on this run, but to the credit of our franchise company, we have come a long way. This is an excellent contract. This has been reviewed by audit. Council has looked at it extensively, both here and in study session. And I am pleased to support the idea of this extension of your contract and your services. You've always done a great job for the city of Palm Springs, and I'm glad to see you're still with us. And we'll be here tomorrow to discuss fueling stations and altered fuel vehicles, so we'll continue on that dialogue. All right, with that, this is a minute order. I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 3-0, deemed unanimous. Congratulations. Let's now turn to our added starters. Mr. Reddy, I believe you have a MAPS MOU for us?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do have one, number 34. It is a recommendation of our management unit's contract. I would like to thank the management unit. They have agreed to agree. With our negotiating team, we have worked out this resolution to a somewhat very difficult contract in a very difficult budget year. And with that, I would ask our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Mills, to step to the microphone and give you the details of what is in this contract agreement. Thank you.
Maybe, Mr. Reddy, I'll do the report.
I will ask this. Does the council need a report? You know this, you've negotiated on behalf of the council. Do you want a staff report? Do you want to move this item?
No, just move the minute order, please.
Very good. Motion by Ms. Rella Spurgeon to move this.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oden. I think on behalf of the council, we'd like to extend our great appreciations to MAPS for once again, standing with us in difficult times and assisting us in reaching some of our goals. And this is an outstanding unit in Palm Springs, in our employment unit. They have always been very quick to find ways in which to facilitate improvements in the work they do. And again, they demonstrated here on this MOU, because they have made a lot of concessions, knowing that we needed some help, and they were there for us. So on behalf of the council, I want to express our appreciations to MAPS.
You know, Ms. Mayor, I might add one other thing to that, too, because it spills over in other ways. You basically have the employees who are up this year agreeing to take no increase this year, which, that's obviously a very, very major thing for them to do. It spills over in other things. For example, the item we just had on the Palm Springs Disposal, although in their past decade, they've had a provision that said that they're entitled to receive up to a 3% CPI increase. We basically went to them and said, other components of the city are taking major hits here because of the city's economic situation, and we're not going to guarantee you a 3% increase. And so there's an economic benefit that spills over into the city's other activities of going to vendors and telling them that the employees are stepping to the plate, and the vendors need to do that as well.
Well said. We have a motion by Ms. Rella Spurgeon, and a second by Mr. Oden. Any additional comments or questions? Elsewise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 3-0. Deemed unanimous. Reports or requests? The item 35 is the Treasurer's Investment Report, as of April 30th. Council, any questions on that report?
No.
Seeing none. Item 36 is the Village Fest Board Appointment. You'll see in your packet, there is one applicant here.
I'll move that.
Second.
Let me get the name on the record.
Jackie Tutanjin.
Jackie, thank you.
To serve as the Village Fest jeweler representative. We've had problems trying to find someone who would do this for us. Jackie has done it for a number of years, and she's willing to come back, so we appreciate that.
Far beyond the call of duty.
Truly, truly. Permanent fixture.
Since '93.
We got a motion by Mr. Oden, was it?
Yes.
And a second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's deemed unanimous. Any public reports or requests? Any staff reports or requests?
There are none, sir.
Seeing none. We have a Board and Commission Annual Dinner on Friday, June 20th, at 6:00 in the Springs A and C Room at the Convention Center. The reception starts at 6:00, and the dinner's at 6:30. We have our next regular meeting on July 2nd at 7:00. And our next study session is scheduled for Wednesday, the 25th, at 7:00, and both will be preceded by a 5:30 closed session. Oh, I'm sorry. We will not have quorum scheduled for next week, so there will not be a study session on the 25th. Thank you, Mr. Oden. And if you'll look at the sign on the back of the council chambers on Friday, we will have the official groundbreaking of the much-awaited Palm Springs Skate Park. This is next to the Swim Center at the end of Pavilion Way in Sunrise Park. We will have a groundbreaking at 5:00. The council members will all try to attend, and we will turn soil with the intent of building a skateboard park with an opening of October of 2003. So, long awaited. And with that, it is now 9:07, seeing no further business before the council. We will stand adjourned. Thank you, and good night.